I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting, which has been duly posted with the Department of City Commission to order, and at this time I would like to ask, I'm sure Mike Metzler, to lead this interview.
God, thank you for the gathering of the people here today, and may we accept the wisdom and light that flows from you, and the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit on earth.
Thank you. Join me to put the leaders.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the God willing, justice for our home.
Welcome, everybody, and glad to have you here in our meeting tonight. Glad that the Supreme Court ruled that we can continue to have indications in any of our city commission meetings. Item one is a public announcement of civic events. Warburg?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners, City Manager. The announcements, this Saturday maintain we will have the first Blues on the Hill concert for the series for this year will be at the McKelvey Park at 7:00 to 11:00. And we will have also the second Harlingen San Benito Metropolitan Planning Organization annual bike ride. It will be on May 17, starting at 8:00 a.m. at the McKelvey Park, June. And Saturday, May 23, we will have the Tito Harlingen Community Wide Trash Off Day from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the Soccer Complex parking lot, 4515, East Harrison. Please bring your trash. It will be limited, and so only accept all items. That's all the announcements for the this month.
All right, thank you very much. Hope everyone will come out and participate in those events. Item two is presentation proclamations, and we have four tonight. I'll begin with Salvation Army Proclamation and ask everybody with Salvation Army to come on up and board.
Come on, third of us, come on, come on.
Stand here in place of battle way. Proclamation reading, whereas the Salvation Army's only business in this community, as everywhere, was still human business, taken with joy for the family of humankind to the greater glory of God, and whereas through sound, innovative, and professional services, Salvation Army serves the people of Cameron County with unshakable faith in all, no matter how desperate the situation views, all people with possibilities. And whereas Salvation Army acts on behalf of all residents or communities, and meet human needs in this day without discrimination, I therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City Department, hereby proclaim the period of May 12 through May 16, 2014. Salvation Army urge all citizens to join me and send past men and women to find the broken-hearted and new that aren't or are community, find their quiet service in connection. We'd just like to recognize all of the volunteers, the board members who work so hard to support the staff of the Salvation Army and the work that they do, and everything that you do supports our community and makes our community a better place to live. And so, thank you so much for your devotion to this organization. I know many of you have been on board for years, and that's the same thing for you.
John here has a little bit of history, how the Salvation Army came to Texas, because we're also celebrating 125 years in Texas.
2014 marks the 125th anniversary of Salvation Army's ministry in Texas. Today, the Salvation Army can be found serving the needs of Texans through 62 sports community centers, nine service centers, and 253 service centers governing every district in Texas. Salvation Army was founded in London, England by a Methodist minister named William Booth in 1865. He took the message of God's love to the poverty-stricken streets of London's east side. The Army quickly grew in popularity, and today is actively working in 126 countries around the world, including right in North Harlem. Alan Janelli, an Italian naval captain, brought the Salvation Army to Texas and arrived in 1888 after encountering the Salvation Army while on a trip in Calcutta, India, where he attended one of the meetings, and was so touched by the message that he devoted his life to the service of God through the Salvation Army. Rough citizens in the frontier of the Dallas city of Dallas started one day when Janelli, Salvation Army attire began preaching in downtown corner. Every time Janelli, known as the Salvation Army Minister, had his decree to create a success in the street ministry, he would send a long and earnest letter to General William Booth that officers be sent to Texas to lead the work. The letter Raj got so thick that the Salvation Army's work was officially opened in the North Star and Texas State of Texas in 1889. On behalf of the board, I want to thank all of y'all who participated in our killer campaign, which raises some of the signs that stays right here.
Thank you. Item B is a proclamation for elder abuse prevention, and we saw some of the individuals who, especially if I could find him, are in labor, that we have adult protective services. Whereas people who are elderly and have disabilities have contributed to the general diversity of the community by helping preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. Whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and the wisdom and experience that enrich our lives. And whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic institutional settings are widespread problems affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. And whereas in 2013, 9,134 cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, of which 59,000 were confirmed. Whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported, because the elderly who are being abused find it difficult to tell anyone, and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, on cultural and ethnic groups, whether they're in good health, or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods or in suburbia. Whereas many of the cases investigated by adult protective services in Texas improve self-neglect, involve self-neglect, and it's our duty as citizens to reach out to these people and be, or act responsible, Mayor of the City Department, hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 to be elder abuse prevention month, and urge all citizens to work together to combat this abuse. In light of speaking in the drawing room, where we have disabilities, and want to congratulate all of them, women, but adult protective services can do such a kind job to address this problem in our community, and thank you for what you do in our mission.
(Applause).
Mayor, and the City Council, and the citizens of Harlingen for acknowledging the many victims who fall prey to abuse, neglect, and exploitation. I encourage everybody to make a report if you suspect it, and we will leave brochures on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. IFC is MDA, Build the Food Days Proclamation, and Jennifer Molina, the area director of the Valley District of the District Association, she might come forward, and any more firefighters here that call in this process, might come on up here. Whereas the Harlingen Professional Firefighters exemplify the most time-honored American ideals of public service and sacrifice, protecting the citizens of our communities in tragedy on the whole front. Whereas the Harlingen Professional Firefighters are highly trained, dedicated, and demonstrate daily, strong, very talented, character, and courage in facing danger. Whereas the Harlingen Professional Firefighters don't selfishly donate their time and energy to supporting the battle against muscular dystrophy by filling the boot each year for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. And whereas in 2013, the Harlingen Professional Firefighters raised $31,246 for the Muscular Dystrophy Association through the annual Fill the Boot campaign. And whereas the Harlingen Professional Firefighters' endless service to MDA has given so much hope for families fighting aerobicular diseases, and therefore, I am very responsible, my person before he tested, to be on behalf of the City Department, hereby proclaim May and June 2014 as MDA Fill the Boot Days, and present this to the community in December. And again, thank our firefighters for getting involved in this program, signature program for firefighters across the country. It's nice to see our own fire department participating in this and helping to move the cause. First one to run, I can pause you.
Sure, of course, thank you, of course, to the Mayor, to the City Department, to the Commissioners, every year for being very supportive of us. Without the firefighters, we truly could not do all the services and support that we do throughout the valley. Harlingen has been our number one department each year for the past probably five years, so that's awesome, you know, round of applause. (Applause). Congratulations, this is actually our 60th year celebration of partnerships with the firefighters that MDA has had, so for the last six decades, you know, they've been with us side by side battling aerobicular diseases, so that's amazing. I know, can you say a few words?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of the Commission, we want to thank you for the opportunity that you allowed us to continue working, partner up with MDA, and we want to be able to come back next year and say that we're still number one on the list. So that's our goal for this year, and we thank you.
Thank you, yeah. (Applause). Final proclamation tonight is the National Public Works Week Proclamation. Whereas public work services provide in our community an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as the planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and scale of public work officials. Whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the Lord, they serve the Lord. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City Department, hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through the 24th, 2014, as National Public Works Week, City Department, to call upon all citizens and civil organizations to acquaint themselves, the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day, our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I like to talk about this a little bit when I talk about public health, and that is public health that touches your lives every single day, and includes men and women who provide these vital services that we all take for granted. Hot holes getting filled, garbage being collected, streets being repaired, drainage working properly. We all take these things for granted, but they don't happen by themselves. They happen because dedicated men and women who work for the City Department, make that happen, and we want to express our great appreciation to them and recognize them during public work.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. We are forced to ask you to direct group of dedicated professionals that work for the city and truly care about the community, and are very proud to work with each one of you guys. And ladies.
That's it. Next, we have item number three, which is a presentation in regards to the Keith Harlingen Department of Public Report by Nick Consigliere, President of Harlingen Prep.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We just wanted to report to you on a lot of the activities and efforts that we've been making this past quarter with Harlingen Prep. Just to give you a reminder, our mission statement is to educate the community about and promote recycling and beautification and curbing the clean environment. And I think when we go through this little presentation, you'll see that we're definitely hitting on all those key parts of our mission statement, and so our mission is definitely being fulfilled. Part of our education is tours. We have done five tours this year with about 130 kids that go through our center and see the process of recycling. We have the best recycling center facility in South Texas, no doubt about that, run by John Augustus, and of course with the support of Dan Sancha Serna. We have a wonderful clean facility, and so we're able to safely have tours there. So we've done five tours this year. Customer appreciation, there's nothing better to grow your business than do business with people that already do it with you. So we want people that utilize our center to know that we appreciate them taking the effort to recycle, because in Harlingen, there is a little bit of effort that's needed to recycle. So we had our first one, we're going to do these quarterly. It was February 15, which was a Saturday, and that's roughly about two cars a car every two minutes. And so we're processing a lot of cars on a Saturday morning. We held a already tree dedication in honor of a former mayor, Rick Rodriguez. We planted a tree on the St. Anthony Catholic Church property, purely requested the family. We had MMA cadets out there with the colors, and the St. Anthony Green Team assisting us with that tree planting. So it was a nice event in honor of former mayor Rodriguez. A new initiative that Harlingen Prep has taken up is to flower up Harlingen. This is a new project that we want to put money into the ground with beautiful flowers in our public spaces, along the medians, and so those are just two shots of where our flowers are. Jeff bought the itty-bitty tiny ones, but they're growing, and they're looking a whole lot. You can see the color coming in, so next year we're probably buying a little bit larger ones. But I think that's a great initiative, they're having a little bit of investment to help beautify our city. Spring litter bash was another tremendous success with over 700 volunteers with 800 pounds of litter. Now, that's cigarette butts, water bottles, fast food cups, straws, anything that's pretty much light, that people like to throw out their window, that's what makes up that 820 pounds. It's not tires, and couches, and mattresses, that's another issue. And then, of course, we separated, we were also collecting recyclables as well, so that's 200 pounds of recycling as well. A lot of these kids that are here tonight to be recognized for their efforts certainly were there as well that day. Kidfit, we're out of the community to educate that we're here, that the recycling center is a beautiful resource for our community, and the best part about Kidfit is all the reconnects we have with people who kind of stopped recycling and got them enthusiastic about recycling again here in Harlingen. Spring Eat Waste Event, we held one in the fall, which was tremendously successful. We did it again in the spring, where we collected 23,043 pounds of old CRT monitors, old computers, someone even brought a Wii controller, like seriously, they just brought that in. So it's good that we're keeping these materials out of the landfill, we work with a certified recycler on these materials, so it's safe for our citizens to dispose of these products, and knowing that any type of information they may have on any type of hard drives are disposed of correctly. So so far this year, 41,681 pounds of electronics out of our landfills and properly disposed of. But the reason why we're here with all these beautiful young children this evening is we want to recognize their efforts in participating in two contests that we held this year. We had a phone book recycling contest, we collected 6,077 phone books. Once again, they're not in our landfills, they're being properly recycled. And what we did was, we divided this into two categories, large campuses, small campuses, and had first place winner for each category, 500 student count being the threshold for larger, above that being large. Stewart Place being the large campus was the first place winner, and St. Albans Day School was the first place winner of the small school, but they certainly pulled their weight, collecting, I think, 3,000...
3,642.
Phone books, so what a tremendous success, and they had phone books lined in their hallways for weeks and weeks as the kids continued to bring them in, and we're going to recognize them this evening for their efforts. The other thing that we had this year that was new is recycling contest. Want to get small and large, Savala being the small campus, Bonham being the large campus. We presented Shack Cities campuses. These kids did a wonderful job of organizing their own recycling centers on their campuses. Savala, their fifth graders run their recycling program on a designated day, they go around the classrooms, and they pick up all the recyclables, they take them back to sorting area, and then our city staff then goes picks up those containers. Bonham does a tandem, you can see this box here, the seniors at the high school built these boxes, these crates, and so the second graders run the recycling program there, but they have the wisdom of the fifth graders to guide them through the halls as they pick up the recyclables. And so they have these aprons made, and they've just done a fantastic job. Savala Elementary collected about 6,700 pounds of water bottles, paper, things like that, and Bonham did 8,800 pounds of the same type of recycling materials. It takes a lot of recyclable materials to build that type of weight. Want to recognize MMA Military Academy, they are definitely, if you've seen, you can tell by the photos, they're always there. In January, there's the mayor right there, recycle responsibly. In January, because of the weather, we had a lot of community service units that wanted to show up, and so we were able to call MMA Cadets to help us get that facility, because it doesn't take but a day to fall desperately behind on processing these materials. And so we wanted to recognize all that the Marine Military Academy does for us. There's always a bottom line to everything. You can see that your recycling center is well on its way to have a record year on the amount of funds that we generate compared to last year, and there's a lot of things that play into that, a lot of variables, but we're moving in the right direction, and of course, everything that we generate goes back into keep our budget, keep our beautiful budget, which is the flowers, the contests that we do, the painted graffiti, all the beautification properties that we do year after year. So we're all on our way to do more for this community. And we're always in great gratitude to the City Harlingen Public Works Department, led by Dan, always there to lend their support, expertise, and always the can-do attitude, but we can always get something done. So with that, I guess we can recognize the schools on their winning.
Let me first thank you, Nick, and for your long service to President Crown, and this effort to beautify our community, and all to each one of your board members and everybody who participates in this, thank you for what you do.
It's an honor.
This is actually item four of the presentation, which is a recognition and following of schools, and recognition of their efforts for recycling materials, and so you can help me with it. Did you want to say something?
Nice, if you want to, St. Albans, St. Albans.
What I've got is St. Albans, and so St. Albans, come on up here. Jennifer Wilson, Christine Carz, and guys, come on up here, because you're going to get your picture taken, and it'll be on the C's website, and tell it by the public city website.
This is the future, Pat, she has many pictures. She even has her school name on one.
Well, we want to thank you guys for collecting 3,642 phone books in this effort, and I actually saw those because they called me and said, hey, Mayor, I need you to go over there and take all of your phone books. They had trees, they called me. (Applause). Stewart Place Elementary, winner of 2014 Recycle Contest, 749 phone books, come on up, Stewart Place. Congratulations, all right. We heard it repeated, great news, to you for helping with this effort, really is important.
We don't recall what time you're coming in antique because of cell phones, so we're going to keep trying.
Congratulations. We have Savala Elementary, County Attorney Darisa, the Assistant Principal Debbie Ingram, counselor here, and all you Savala Elementary, you guys. All right, you're the winner of the 2013-14 Recycling Contest with 6,171 pounds of recyclable materials. Congratulations. (Applause). All you did to help, okay, you know, we're just fantastic, thanks a lot. And the other winner of 2013-14 Recycling Contest, Bonham Elementary, come on up here, Bonham. Nick, we've got Jimmy from UDS, the principal, and Valie from Wayless, the counselor, and Donna Relling, Samantha Gero, Diana Garz, Susan Serrin, Holly Beard, raise your hand, Jay Webb, raise your hand, Rose Morgan, raise your hand, Erin, Allison, Jess, would raise your hand, Kaylee David, raise your hand, I didn't call your name, raise your hand. All right, congratulations, you guys, thank you so much. (Applause). You've done a great job.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip now, now, skip to the consent agenda. Item 6A, B, C, D, and E is your motion to approve the consent agenda. All those members say aye. Motion carries. I'm going to go to item 12 and skip down to the executive session items. Training plan consultation presented to chapter 551, Set of Order During Cost Number 2009, LA 3734, City Department versus Innovation, Arts Entertainment. B, attorney consultation presented to the section 551.0712, Texas Governor, legal advice and protection of passengers, service classification orders for fire department-related legal issues, and presented to chapter 551, so chapter D, CA Governor, sections 551.0712, regarding commercial and financial information of a business prospect, which the city has been opening for development negotiations, we discuss financial or other incentives with a business prospect known as Project DPC, is your motion to go, anti-secret legal advice, is your motion to go in the executive session? All those members say aye. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council is going to retire to the back, go to the back room, and talk to their lawyer about some things, the executive session hopefully be out and then... within 20 minutes. Okay, we're out of executive session at 7:12. And... Go ahead and go to the action items. Item 13, consider taking action to authorize side counsel to negotiate a settlement agreement pursuant to discussion in executive session, cost number 2009, O8374, City of Harlem versus Innovation Arts Entertainment. Is there a motion to authorize side counsel to negotiate a settlement pursuant to discussion in executive session?
Make a motion.
I just want to ask you a question before we approve these. You're going to actually want to ask? Yeah, I want to ask, wait, the one?
Break, I want, and this is, he's not the attorney for this one?
Okay, well, I want to ask you, you told me that it's not going to be, it's going to be an assistant chief, the chief?
No, we're not there yet. We're not there yet.
Number 13.
We're number 13.
Hold on a minute.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, this is, this is the theater provisions. Okay, we have a motion, second.
Motion, I second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, item 14, consider taking action if needed to adopt civil service classification orders for fire department reaffirming existing rank structure, establishing the number of budgeted positions in each rank, establishing recognized assignments under applicable service, civil service law. I ask the city manager to explain this before we read the caption.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm going to let our attorney kind of give you the technical background, but before we get there, I just want to assure the commission, the public, you know, couples clarify a couple, and one is, we're not getting rid of any positions, we're not eliminating any positions, nobody in the structure losing any money. And in fact, we are creating a new deputy chief position, which is going to be available for any of the other firefighters to test for those positions. And I'll let our civil service attorney kind of give you a rundown on the technical aspects of this ordinance.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, yes, I've been working with city manager and fire chief on this ordinance, and especially in response to the notice for the upcoming bargaining cycle that's coming, that we've already been put on notice. One of the things that we've been lacking is a classification ordinance in civil service that is very clear about what the rank structure is in the department, and also how many budgeted positions there are in each of the ranks, and also what assignments the city recognizes. A lot of what this ordinance does is simply kind of restate what we already have in place through other documents, through the budget document, to some extent through the collective bargaining agreement. But it does do a couple of things that are, so it restates that in a very clear way, and we're not making any changes to what we already have in place. It does do a couple of things that are new. Number one, it adds a second deputy chief position. This will be the highest tested civil service position in the department. There will still be an appointed position under civil service law, okay? That's not a tested position, that's appointed, and that's already existing in the law, there's no, there's no need to do anything about that. So, the second deputy chief position is a tested civil service position, we already have one. And upon the second reading of this ordinance, that will trigger a time period of 90 days for the directory to run a test, civil service test, in order for eligible candidates to promote for that test. And so, there will be a promotional opportunity available to qualify people. It tends to be the rank below. In this case, it's going to end up being actually two ranks below, because the rank below is this battalion chief position, which is a rank of one. And that's one of the things we're working towards, is to eliminate the ranks of one that exist in the department. So, the second deputy chief position will resolve that issue as to the deputy fire chief. The second thing that it does is that it follows a trend that we've certainly seen in other communities, where the fire marshal duties become an assignment, and they can be moved to any qualified candidate. The Texas Commission on Fire Protection sets some standards on fire marshal duties, and we want to move that to be an assignment, to where anybody that has eligible qualifications to have that position, and then that assignment is at the discretion of the fire chief and the city manager, in terms of who has it. That gives you some breadth and depth in terms of that function. Those are the only two things that this does. Once we get into the bargaining process, we're going to, we would like to explore possibly adding some additional positions, hopefully at the lieutenant. We're not prepared to do that now, because we don't know what the fiscal picture is going to look like, but when we're in the bargaining with the union, we will get a better handle on that, so at some point, we may come back to you, I'm hoping, to create some more positions.
What we're doing tonight, doesn't...
So, now you're not doing that.
No, sir, we're going to sort that internally.
Because we don't need to make any budget changes on these changes, so the existing budget will handle this change. So, there will be, on the second reading of this, a promotional opportunity...
Other cities rotate the fire marshal position?
Yeah, it moves around amongst the highest ranking people.
This is not something that would be unique to Harlingen?
No, it's not unique to Harlingen at all.
Okay. Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yeah, I got questions. I've got two different... I got something over here that they say they eliminated positions.
Yes, and the reason, and what you got was two things, I want to be clear, they're corrections, Commissioner. Number one, on the lieutenant position, the draft that we had forwarded to be posted, we had asked to do an actual, you know, count of what positions we had in each rank. We just had a clerical error on the rank of lieutenant. I think it was underrepresented by three, or maybe even more. It was wrong, I know that, and I think that the word got out that we were trying to eliminate three positions, that's not the case, that was a clerical oversight. Someone brought it to our attention, we went back, and we did the count correctly. So, we actually have, the second copy that you got, I had sent over, that will be the version that is on the second reading, when this goes back on for the second reading, has the correct count. The second correction that has, if you'll notice, that in the first draft, we had left the number of budgeted assignment slots, and some of those were, just had blanks, okay? I had not yet, when the deadline came to forward this to be included in your packet, I had not been able to tie down that information from the department. You know, so I got that information, and we now know exactly who is getting these different types of pays. Actually, the pays on this is already established in the contract. These assignments are already recognized in the contract.
So, we're going to have that assistant chief, we're going to have the fire prevention the same, we're going to have everything the same, except that position they...
Everything's the same, we're just expanding it a little bit at this time by adding that second position, and we're making the modification on the fire marshal duties. By, we're disassociating it from the rank and making it as part of an assignment. But the rank of deputy fire chief that exists right now, it stays the same, it's already a deputy fire chief rank, that's not going to change, there's not going to be any change to the pay of that rank. It just gives us more latitude about, you know, how to manage the department. So, we recommend approval of the ordinance, we will, you know, on second reading, we'll have the corrected version of this, and if you approve it on second reading, at that point, we will get with the civil service director and say, okay, you've got a deadline of 90 days to get a test in place and test for this position. So, I'm expecting that there will be a promotional opportunity at the battalion chief level and down. We're going to have to open it up to the captains in order to get a competitive exam, because a rank of one is not a competitive exam by definition.
Read the caption.
An ordinance reaffirming, modifying, clarifying classification structure in the fire department to establishing recognized assignments.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Now make a motion.
One second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, sign, motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Can we discuss?
Yeah. I'll go to add five approval of the minutes for April 4th, April 16, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mayor, I'd just like to state that you should go forward, give me this minute, and there is more directions that I will take care of. I'll mention them at the next, for the next minutes.
Okay.
Like you say, I was not at the April 16 meeting, so I could not vote for against the minutes of April 16.
We want to do them separate?
Yeah, any other additions or corrections? All those in favor, all those in favor to approve the minutes, April 4th, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And April 16th, those say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Or, we have a motion?
I think so.
All right.
I don't think we made the motion. I'll make the motion that we approved the minutes separately. 5A and 5B.
Okay, well, you have, that's a motion to approve April 4th.
April the 4th, 5A.
And we have a second over here. A second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to be approved, 5B.
16th.
16th of April the 16th, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7, public carrying considered ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated end district to general retail GR district for 41.21 acres of land out of south portion of block 182, assembly land and water, company subdivision located on north side of Hale Avenue, east of Camelot Drive, the applicants have fled, or variance suburb, public carry Joel.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from not designated zoning district to general retail district to allow for behavioral health facility on part of the subject property. This is a subject property, you can see it's on north side of Hale Avenue, just like east of Camelot Drive. You see the subject property is currently vacant, has about 1,200 feet of frontage on Hale Avenue, and a gap of about 1,400 feet. This is a view of property from the south, this is currently vacant, from the east, this is a subject property, and then the west is a subject property. The request is consistent with the future land use map, which shows this area as general detail. Public here was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, there are no concerns addressed at the meeting, and staff at P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of the request. Take any questions of the applicant, results are present for questions.
Okay, let's go to item A, it's a public carry, a public carry, it's one who would like speaking for or against this rezoning. Here you have a closing, public carry, go to item B, consider taking action, approve the vote, mentioned rezoning request, ask for you to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning orders, the City of Harlem rezoning from not designated district to general retail district for 41 plus, 41.21 plus or minus acres of land out of the south portion of block 182, assembly land and water, company subdivision located on the north side of Hale Avenue, east of Camelot Drive, providing for publication or ordaining of the matters related to the project.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item A, consider taking action to accept or reject leases for the use of two city unbuildings, Degas DBA Child Care Center, a provision for the building located at 104 West Taylor Street and Harlingen Child Development Center, for the building located at 701 East Madison for purpose of operating a child care.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We received one bid for each of the two buildings. Staff is recommending that we accept a bid submitted by Ellen Days, DBA Harlingen Child Development Center, and Child Development, Child Care Center of Harlingen, for the property at 701 East Madison in the amount of $2,442.96 a month, and for the property at 104 West Taylor, in the amount of $1,880.28 per month. Against staff is recommending approval. Ms. Day has been in these buildings for well over 15 years, and this lease will be for a five-year period initial, and it will automatically renew on an annual basis unless terminated sooner by either party. It will generate nearly $52,000 a year in revenue annually.
Consider both to accept the staff recognition. So, Mayor. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, sign, motion carries. Item A, consider taking action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Harlem and Community Loan Center, and only on subsidiary of your direct value multibank, to provide the small dollar lending program for city employees.
Mayor, good to the commission. Mayor and Mayor Lieutenant, with Lieutenant Cardenas, who's about to hand out some information for your program this program. She is with the Community Loan Center, it's a city area of the Royal Grand Valley Multibank. What they want to do is provide a service to city employees that is alternative to paying loans or car title loans. What they would do is provide any city employee with up to a $1,000 loan. The process require no credit history or FICO score, that was a misprint on the executive summary. The only requirement is that the employee, obviously, be currently employed with the city and have a checking account. The average interest rate for those loans would be anywhere from 21%, 28%. The example that they had in the packet was at 18%. The city is not responsible for any of the loan payments, there is no cost to us at all, and staff is recommending approval of this item. It is just an added benefit, it will be provided to the employees.
Would you like to come on out and introduce yourselves, and maybe briefly tell the commission about the program, the vague reasons for the program?
Okay, good evening, my name is Giselle Cardenas, and I'm the Business Relationship Manager for Community Loan Center.
And my name is Nadia Rosa, I'm the program coordinator for that program.
This program was created to help employees in the RGV area to have access to more affordable loans. As we all know, predatory lending in the RGV areas are charging 400% on the APR, and the statistics shows we are losing on just the RGV area year, $50 million in fees that they're charged from the payday loan and car title loans. When we implement this program, we have observed and we have experienced that the employees in the RGV area are learning more about their finance and how to manage their budget, because we provide with this program also education, which is very important. And with the small, the 18% APR, they don't pay high fees, and they're able to pay their loan in 12 months. So, it's a very convenience for them. It's working so well that we're going to go and implement them statewide, so we are in the process right now to go statewide. Any question?
Yeah, I'm reading your materials, so you're owned by the, mostly the major banks. And what is the interest rate you will be charging, or is it a fixed or variable interest rate depending on credit?
It is fixed, it's 18%.
Okay, and generally speaking, what FICO scores do you accept?
We do not check, we do not take credit for approval. We do report payments, we do report to the credit bureau as they're paying, but we do not require a credit score for approval.
And what is the maximum you will loan to an employee?
$1,000.
At any one time?
Right.
So, it won't be multiple $1,000 loans?
No, absolutely.
Maximum $1,000, 20 months to pay it back?
12.
12 months to pay it back.
This is just for the people they want to borrow some money for the, for a month, right? Something like that?
It's just for the people they don't have access to conventional credit lines. Like, a lot of the people go to the bank and they apply, and they're applying, and So it's very high for them to repay that back. So they stay in the cycle where they keep renewing their loan, because they have to pay back in two weeks. So when the two week comes, if they cannot pay back their loan, they have to refinance. Those refinanced fees are the ones hurting our community, and they're hurting our consumer. So those fees are not staying in the RGV area. So if our consumers, or the people that are applying for those loans, don't have money, because they need to repay back to the payday loans and the car title loans, we don't have money to spend on the local economy, and it's affecting the economy too.
I saw on Channel 5 last night, they had a $700 loan, which is, now has a $2,400 limit. Is this available to anybody, or is this special just for our employees?
It's designed to work through employer payroll deduction, so it's designed for the employers to sign on with us, and we, the employees can apply through us.
So our payroll department will be making that payment to you rather than the...
That's correct.
It'll be an employee deduction or a payroll deduction, so that way there's a guaranteed payment. That's the guarantee for y'all.
Correct.
Correct.
Once the employee leaves, they're not responsible for that payment anymore, if they still owe money to the agency, they'll be responsible for collecting directly from the employee when they depart to cities.
But I mean, as long as they're our employee...
Yes.
Do payroll deduct, and so it makes it nice and clean for everybody.
Exactly.
And then we take the creditors off the table.
Yes, and I got a lot of feedback from employees that are already participating and receiving the loans, and it's really good, because they say, I don't have to worry about sending the payment, I don't have to worry about being late, and these payments are being reported to the credit bureau. So for those who don't have credit, they establish credit, and for those who has bad credit, they can rebuild their credit.
Right. It's really providing an alternative, an alternative to our folks, all our employees, to these very high interest rate places that are really hurting people, I think, and, you know, it's really an interesting issue, I've been following it since the last legislative session, where, you know, there was an attempt to try to get in there and regulate these places, and the lobby was so powerful that they squashed it, really, and so, you know, if, you know, this is something that if there's no recourse on the city, it's just an alternative for our employees to get, to go someplace else.
It's a great benefit for our employees, because they can't just walk into your office, they have to be an employee of the city.
That's right.
Or some other employer in Harlingen that y'all negotiated with.
That's correct.
So if they get a loan for $1,000, how much are they going to pay back?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
If they get a loan for $1,000?
On $1,000, at 12 months, what they pay extra is $120.08 for the year.
The other thing to point out is that it's not only a bank, but it's a bank that comprises a community development institution.
That's right.
And then also, it's certified, but US Department of Treasury is a certified development financial institution, which is, its whole mission is to serve underserved markets and populations, so it's a credible entity.
But this is community reinvestments, right?
Yes.
This is CRA, this is why the big banks are involved. They have to...
Right, right, they have a legal obligation to X dollars in the community, they understand the law.
Yeah, okay, any other, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the memorandum?
So moved.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, I think it's a really good thing, so it's wonderful, thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with the city of Harlingen.
Thank you.
Item 10, consider to take action to appoint three representatives to the finance steering committee to serve with representatives from Brownsville, Texas and Matamoros. I will leave this, and I would like to appoint, I'd like the commission to appoint Merced, Pat Stravino, Rondell Garza, and Norwood Fiddy. Is there a motion to approve? Aye. Those opposed, sign, motion carries. These three will be on the steering committee with representatives from Brownsville and the representatives from Matamoros. Merced is a, you know, a real estate developer, and was from Eagle, you know, she was originally from Eagle Pass, was on the Texas Quarter Economic Development Commission, was supported by John Sharp 20 years ago, and knows a lot about quarter issues. Of course, Rondell Garza is our economic development director, and then Norwood Fiddy used to be the plant manager at Gibbs Diecast, and so he knows a lot about manufacturing, and so these would be, I think, a good mix of people to help try to envision the development of a manufacturing zone, hopefully of the city.
And I believe he does, he just, he had the manufacturers association here.
He's also, yes, and he also is involved with Harlingen Manufacturers Association, which meets regularly.
Correct.
I'll make the motion to accept the three, four, nine people to serve on the finance and the steering committee.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, sign. Item 11, board appointments, are there any board appointments? No board appointments, then go to item 15, sense of communication.
I have Wayland, Mayans. Uh, Royden, J.A. with us.